Let's go ahead and call the meeting in order. This is our regular work session, July 10, 2020. If you would, please stand and join me to pledge allegiance and remain standing for the indication.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're gathered here tonight to conduct the business of the city. Please give us the wisdom and the guidance that we need to make the right kind of decisions for those that we represent. In addition, please bless those that are less fortunate than we are and have your oversight of all of the military that are defending the rights for us to be here in a free fashion. In your name we pray. We want to welcome all of our guests and listeners tonight. We begin with a consideration to approve the agenda. Do you have a motion to approve or amend?
Yes, so moved.
A motion and second, any other discussion? Not those who favor seeing about saying aye. No, all members voting for motion. Our ten-minute public input period tonight. We have a number of people signed to speak. Andy Bonner, first.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Andy Bonner, and I am a Canton resident. I'm here tonight to discuss the fire protection district tax. I've read the proposed ordinance as it appears on the agenda, and I'd like to read the section that concerns me the most. It says the tax will be a separate tax imposed and collected in the same manner as the general property tax, except that no exemption shall apply. Is this saying what I think it is, where no senior citizen will receive an exemption toward this tax? Based on this wording, an older widow lady on a fixed income could be paying an additional $300 to $500 in new city taxes. Why would you intentionally pass a tax on seniors on fixed income? Let me say this really concerns me, and I cannot personally support it. I feel that there should be other options, such as a bond referendum that would only be used for fire services, or possibly the city obtaining federal or state grants to provide funds for fire services. There has to be another way to come up with the money. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Lane Wood?
Gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, may I ask you to speak? I'm not very tall, how's that? Okay. I'm here first to thank you so much for allowing us the privilege of having a land lease for the Community Victory Garden. It is fabulous. If you haven't been out there to visit it, please come out and check it out. It's by the New Water Tower at Big Oak Drive. And what I'm here to have you guys consider tonight, and I know you're in budget talks, we need a porta potty over there. It's almost to the point now where somebody's going to get caught in the bushes, and that's not going to be pretty. I sure hope it's not me. But I found out it'll cost us $55 a month. We do not have an operating budget. Our budget certainly comes from the leasing of the plots, which are four by twelve feet, and we lease those out at $15 a year, and if you do the math, the water bill's going to take up most of that. So it's $55 a month or $600 per year to have a porta potty there, and we don't need it just for the gardeners. We are, we have been so fortunate to have The Home Depot as our partner there for the events and for everything. This garden, it would not have gotten off the ground, no way, no how, without their generous support, and not only with a grant. They are continually conducting work sessions there for us. They're putting in the children's garden now. We have two troops of Girl Scouts partnering with us, and we have a group called the After-School Crew, which is a private organization that teaches good citizenship, good stewardship of the land, and they're just the nicest kids, and they're so much fun to be with out there. But they're starting demonstration workshops there, or they want to, one Saturday a month. It's probably going to be the third Saturday. We have the parking issue remedied pretty much already. We have taken care of that, but we need a porta potty over there. So we really would like for you guys to consider that, if you would be so kind as to put that in your budget, and let me know how that goes, because it might be the mayor you catch out there in the bushes.
I'm having to make them, right?
Yeah, that's right. I don't want to be caught in my pants. I was told that a girl could run a whole lot faster with her skirt up than a boy could with his pants down when I was little, so. But really, think about that, it'd be great. And the second thing I want to talk to you about, I got really excited the last mission or council meeting a couple of weeks ago, because the agenda was the master plan for the city parks. And that's something that's just, that is so exciting for the city. It will be the most amazing amenity. It'll be the crown jewel for recreation here. We have a lot of people that would be interested in having an input or some community say in this, and I, one idea, and this worked for us in the City of Stanford, where I spent 15 years, and I was very active there, with Main Street as well as with the Chamber and a lot of hands-on with the mayor, but we started a Pennies for Parks campaign where the citizens initiated a fundraising effort to help fund their park. It's ours. It belongs to the city, city property, but we had a Pennies for Parks campaign. We put pickle jars on every countertop of every business in town, and that money added up fast, because people had a vested interest in their park. And another thing they had done successfully was they put it out to the citizens to create, on paper, the kids in the school draw their best park ever. If you were a fifth grader and you were allowed to design your best park, what would it have in it? And everybody got involved, and everybody had a say-so in how the park was built, what ultimately was built in the parks. So I'd like you to consider letting either the citizens or city public partnership let us, let us do a Pennies for Park campaign and help you guys raise money for this park. We've got the Edoa River Park that's going to connect to the Heritage Park, it's going to connect to Bowling Park. We've got 2.2 miles of trails. We can, we can get sponsorships to sponsor parts of these trails. We can get some money, and just let us have a say-so in it, if you think about it, and let me know how you want to proceed. Any questions?
Thank you.
That's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you. And I would like to reemphasize what a great job she's done with this garden, community garden on Big Oak Drive. It's really, really quite nice, looks good, well taken care of, maintained, and she's really done a good job of that. So what I'd like to suggest too here, just as we move on, is that we put that request on our agenda for the next meeting. We're good. Okay, Thomas Weaver.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I would ask that see if Canton Legislative Council considered the written correspondence that I submitted to the city earlier this evening in preparation of its discussion on the potential ordinance amendment that appears on tonight's agenda. Public safety decisions are very important, and it is also very important to consider the state legislature's enactment on the matter and the state legislative deadlines that are included. I would ask that if it would please council to consider this ordinance an emergency, to go ahead and proceed with the first and second readings this evening, and go ahead and present it to the mayor as expeditiously as possible, so that the members of this community can begin to enjoy the legislative enactments and statutory guidance. But the state legislature, I have to wait an additional 24 days, maybe about the end of the month there before, if it were to go through the normal operating gears of the city charter as required, the charter that was passed. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Appreciate it. Actually, I believe on that, we've slated that to be like the first reading tonight, because we have the ordinance here.
Yes, and what he's requesting is, the chart does, it kind of actually allows you to bump to ignore the two reading requirement in emergency. That's what he asked.
Yeah, I'm not sure that would be what I'd consider an emergency at this point, even though the state law may be enacted, we would just circumvent that anyway.
Anybody cited at this point that case would be dropped? I mean, we can't charge anybody with having a knife in public park now.
Bruce and Sally Nagel.
I'm a Solay resident, and approximately six weeks ago, I purchased a water meter, irrigation meter, for $975. I believe the price has been dropped to $750, and I called in for a refund, and they're not giving me a refund, wouldn't give me a refund. They had no reason why, I had no reason why the price has been dropped. I'm concerned about that, and like, they should know why the price has been dropped. And also, I'd like to get a water credit. We have people that have just, a couple of weeks ago, have paid, you know, $975 for an irrigation meter and it's dropped. Price has dropped that, how, why, why did it, I didn't drop.
So we're basically hearing from you, and then we will discuss those later.
Please, please, please give us the water credits and the money that we've lost.
Okay, I think that, that's a request too, that we will need to consider as well at our next meeting. John Canel.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yes, I'm going to talk one thing about the cemetery, one. I have asked that the city employee look into getting a grant. That particular person has never gotten back to me. I have no earthly idea whether it was even considered in subject. You have, right now, the last picture of the mayors that I can come up with. There are a total of 50 mayors from the City of Canton from the very beginning. We're ready for picture frames and the little decals that go with it. Also, the matting that would probably be needed for some of them. We appreciate any help that we can get. And where in this sound bill you want to put them? That's the last question.
Sounds like another issue for another meeting.
That's my last one.
Okay, all right. We need to discuss it in the next meeting, okay? John Rush.
I got a problem. Water and, this is, we talked about a lot, but underground, you don't see them. And the reason I wanted to bring this is because we've talked about the responsibility of the city up to that meter, and the responsibility of the homeowner on the other side of that meter. Now, I'm on the city side of that meter right now. Police officer over there's on the homeowner's side. The city needs to accept responsibility, not only for that meter, into that meter, but for the connection that they make on the other side of that meter, my side of the meter, when they put one of these meters in. A number of years ago, I had one of those meters put in, not at my request, the city just did it. It was leaking, they came out and said, "It's on your side of the meter." And I said, "Well, you put the meter in." He said, "Doesn't matter, it's on your side of the meter, you're going to pay to have it done." Well, that's ludicrous, and I can't tell you how difficult it was to deal with the water department, the city. It was a different administration than the one we have now, but finally, the CFO of the city saw the reason in my argument, and agreed at least to give me a water credit for the water that was lost because of the leak, and I had to pay for it, but they never did pay to the plumber. I had to come out and, come out and pay for my side of the meter that they caused the problem. So whenever you draft anything that has to do with meter responsibility, to me, at least accept responsibility for what you do on my side of the meter to connect it up. Simple stuff, yet seems like somebody's losing track of that. Now, the difficulty I had translates to something that came up. I was not at the last meeting, but I did watch it on the, on the streaming video, and there was a question that came up regarding exceptions to that rule. I know for a fact, a number of years ago, there wasn't anything like an exception. It was very hard and fast. I'm not sure that's the best policy, but I know what I experienced. And the question was asked of Mr. Wood, whether or not there had been any exceptions to those restrictions that we won't pay on the homeowner's side. And because I have a tape, I watched this, Jack Goodwin seemed to have an answer to that question. He says, "We know of one." I listened to that statement. So I'm going to ask two questions. One to Jack Goodwin, what's the one? And my question is to Scott Wood, are there any others? And if there are, what are they and why are they? And I'm very firm and strong believer that if you're going to treat one citizen or a group of citizens differently, that's just not the way to do it. I was treated one way, I thought that was wrong, but if you're going to treat everybody wrong, treat everybody wrong. Don't make exceptions, and if there are exceptions, I'd like to know what they are. We're all supposed to be equal, it doesn't matter what you do in the city, but when you come to being treated for the water meter or whatever, it should be equal. So that's my question to Mr. Goodwin and Mr. Wood, and I can ask the question, but I don't expect an answer, so someone else will have to ask that question for me. Thank you.
Scott, you want to answer it? You want to hear it?
It wasn't discussing the water, it was just about maintaining the efficiency, control of ownership.
I'll be damned if I wanted to ask the question. Well, that's what, we were discussing, I think, I gotta recall, I think we were discussing the problem with irrigation meters, and where our responsibility ends, because Rush originally was going to propose, or was proposing, then we put a regulator there, and I didn't think it was the responsibility of the city past the line. So I went to the, the point that we had on our regular lines into homes, any problems past the lines where we had, where we had any claims against us. And Mr. Rush, I think, answered that question, that everything had a regulator, so we never would have had any claims. And that's probably the question he's referring to that was never specifically answered. I don't know, I use the, you know, the weird example, if we blow any toilet stuff off of the floor, or any busted lines, or any busted water, he uses, that's the question that I posed. So, and I don't know if there was any, or wasn't any, or if we had any. Well, what we could do is, if we could get, you know, we can get him an answer for the next meeting, or I guess if there, if there are other events that you're aware of or unaware of, you know, and find out about it, that the water authority has actually done anything, I guess, on the, what we have we done on the, on the residential side of the meter, if anything.
Pretty much, we should be, where I was thinking of, because we didn't do it.
It's a sewer line, no, what?
It was a sewer line.
Yeah.
I was just connecting it to the.
Okay. Well, anyway. Okay, we'll, we'll, we'll get you an answer, okay? We'll get you an answer. Carol Day.
I just wanted to make an update from Jovi West and myself, I'm talking out. Riverstone Terrace was accepted by the City of Canton and the mayor in the previous administration. That was one of the giffies on our, dedicating our street. Right now, the, that deed and dedication was not followed up on at that time, and currently, Dyer and Russbridge are preparing a deed based on a survey provided by Matt Sasser. I contacted Matt Sasser by email and my phone, and copied, I copied several, several department heads on it, so that's being followed up on and taken care of. The other thing is that the as-built have been received. Jovi West and Engineering pursued that to the records department, and has come up with an as-built engineering plan, which we have never had prior to this, even though we've been looking for it for about six years. It confirms the construction and the utility locations that anybody had any questions about. I think I turned in the information on the streetlights previously, but I'm not positive. And I also know that if that's considered among what is, is agreed upon with our community and the city, that there is a paydown of a little over $2,000, which we know we were reasonably responsible for. The other thing is that there were questions asked about the water lines in our community, because we have a vault and a master meter, but we also have shut-offs at each unit, where if meters were installed, that's where they would be put. Jovi walked the property with me and confirmed that, and also confirmed, according to the engineering plans, that that was accurate. Anything that's required for street signs, I'd like to meet with Dave Pung Jimmy and make sure that we cover that, and have the city install those at our cost, if they aren't acceptable as they stand right now. The water and sewer would remain as it is in the village because of our master meter. We may address it in the future for individual meters and take that master vault, master meter and vault out, but we are not prepared to do that at this time. We're willing to enter into a maintenance agreement for any road repair related to the water and sewer under those conditions. We have one signature that we are missing, and that property is in the process of closing now, so current owners would be remiss if they tried to sign, and we will have that signature later this month. If there's any other questions that I'm missing, I, I would hope that you would bring those to me. Also, with the information that I am gathering, I'd also like to know that the council is willing to work with us on this with these conditions in an agreement, before I bring in an attorney to try to draw up a deed that considers all these things as part of the easement in transferring our streets and our sidewalks and our lights to the city.
Thank you. Okay, that's all we have on the public input. Items, consent agenda, items considered for consent agenda, approval of the June 21st minutes, and the May 2012 financials for informational purposes. Under whole business, discussion of project options for proposed Edoa River Park. Would you want a motion on the, on this? We don't normally act on them at this point, do we? Yeah, we approve the minutes. Approve the minutes only, but not the financial?
Some money.
Okay. We have a motion, we have a second for the minutes of June 21st.
Sir.
Okay, all those in favor, say five, say aye. No, okay. Discussion of project options for proposed Edoa River Park, Mr. Berris.
Thank you, man. I do have the list of choices of different items that we wanted to put on for the park. I did not have an opportunity to get to Mr. Goodwin, and Mr. Huffman is out, so I still need to get their input, but the fact is, the park is continuing to move along, the pace is not ideal, but we're moving ahead at a very steady, planned pace, and we just need to keep the program up and going. So that is, I would like to be able to say, here's what we're going to look at for options on the additional costs, but right now can't do it.
Okay. Discussion of defined benefits, Mr. Berris.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the current program, due to the need to get the budget squared away, we were not able to get to the new group some documents that we needed to have for them to look at to come back and give us a very firm detail on what's going on. I was in contact with them today, they said they did receive it from Nate, and they'll be putting something together next week, and so at the next council meeting, we should be able to look at that and have a dialogue on it to say, here's what we're going to do, the way we're going to go. So it's moving ahead.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Canel?
Since we started moving towards the change of the pension plan, I've given a lot of serious thought. This is a significant change that impacts the city. It's a significant change that could have ramifications 20 years or 30 years down the road. And I thought of all the questions, because we've only looked at one vendor, and that sort of bothers me, because I know that, I do a lot of personal investing, and I deal with multiple vendors, and it sort of bothers me that we've only looked at one particular presentation, and I formed a whole series of questions, which I'd be glad to distribute to everybody here, and I would like to have them answered before we just carted lunch, go ahead and do it. And I'll read them for the record tonight. It's, for example, been said that we're switching from GMA to One America, and by the way, I think we probably should switch from GMA. The One America would take about 30 days. My first question came to mind, is how many defined benefit plans has One America switched from GMA? How many have they done this to know that it only takes, say, 30 days? And if, whichever ones they did, how long did that switching take? What obstacles were encountered that they had to overcome? Are there any penalties, for example, imposed by GMA for us dropping out? I don't know the answer to that question. The investment performance of any pension plan is a major factor in the decision-making process. What is One America's five-year investment history and performance for plans required to conform to Georgia investment statutes? I'd like that question answered. Administrative expenses and the fees affect the overall plan performance. What are all the expenses and fees to be assessed and incurred? How do they compare with what expenses GMA charges? Exactly what are they for, and what impact do those expenses and fees have on the planned performance? That's another unanswered question. What experience does One America have redesigning defined benefit plans under Georgia statutes? Like that question answered. How many defined benefit plans for Georgia governmental entities does One America How many defined benefit plans for Georgia governmental entities does One America currently administer? How many years have they managed these plans? What has been their performance, or what has their performance record been for one year, five years? If we go with One America and decide to change sometime in the future, is the ease of leaving them like they say it is with GMA? What penalties or costs would they impose on us should we decide to change in five years, 10 years, down the road? I know Alpharetta, Peachtree City, and Hayville have all switched from GMA. Has anyone discussed with them as to the transition, the pitfalls, and the factors we should consider? I sort of come to the conclusion is, what is the sense of urgency in switching when we're talking something that's going to stretch out 30 years, 40 years into the future without really evaluating all of, you know, maybe several other options? One America may be the absolute best, but I don't feel comfortable without having answers to these questions. I feel like we're driving, as an analogy, we're driving an old car, and we don't like that old car, and the new model, a new model passes us by, and we jump in and we feel comfortable with that new model, but we haven't looked at seven other models that are out there to decide which one really fits our best needs. Anyway, that's, I would like to see more answers to questions that I have posed, and possibly others here have similar questions before we just jump into something new. I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Oh, some good questions, Beresford.
Yeah, I agree with you. It is pretty good questions, but it's like two weeks late. At our meeting, June 21st, discussion of defined benefits plan was brought forward. Councilman Beresford made a motion that the city consider changing vendors from GMA to One America for defined benefits plan management services, which would save the city around $7,000 to $8,000. Councilman Goodwin seconded the motion. The motion passed 6-0. I think it's done, we made a decision, and we move on. And there was research done, and to the depth that you were asking about, I couldn't say it was, but One America is one of the number one in the country, and they have just brought into the fold two additional cities, and they have a plan, a smooth transition, and I think we've got a good product. And here we go again, make decisions, then backtrack, and then mess around for another three years, and in the meanwhile, we're further down the trail. So it was voted on, 6-0, end of conversation.
Did we, is it your opinion that we voted to select that company to do that work without knowing the contract or the details of the contract?
Mr. Mayor, I just, that's what I read. That's what we did.
So we selected them without knowing what the contract was?
Well, it was not, Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
It wasn't just brought up two weeks ago out of the clear blue. I've been messing around with this thing for a year and a half, and then went back again and went through it again, brought it forward to the council.
We also left, I'm sure, a council member that wanted to come, came to that, asked them several questions. This has been, it's not just a, let's pick this one and go. There were a lot of questions I don't know which companies committed that, and so was it.
I did, but as I look through the things, I'm methodical in forming my questions, and these are all questions to which I have no answers, and I think that they are very important questions. And again, if the council wants to move forward, I understood our vote to be that we wanted to move from GMA. We thought that One America had based on their presentation of documents, that we weren't approving or finalizing that, that we were going to wait until a series of documents. Now, if those documents answer all of these questions, and we look at it in depth and don't like the answers, we can always change our mind. I don't think we should set 30 years into motion, or a pension plan is going to go 30, 40, or forever, you know, however long it goes. We should do it, you know, just because we haven't seen it, and that those documents came in, and they're two pages, it's easy to understand, but everything I've ever seen, and Mr. Dyer, you can correct me, is that we're probably looking at 100 pages of fine details of fees and expenses and all sorts of things in there.
This, obviously, we will need to discuss and move this on to our next meeting, but what, would you answer that?
Well, I mean, there has to be a contract that gets voted on, so there may not be a vote one way or the other, but, um, the wording of the motion is different than what I remembered. I thought it was pretty clear that you were changing vendors, but, and then after the fact, we talked about the contract having to come forward. To me, it's like the waste management situation two years ago, which was vote to change, but there's still got to be another vote because they got their contract.
So there'll still be an opportunity to ask more questions?
Well, if that came in saying they were charging $1 million a year in their contract, you're not going to approve the contract, right? I mean, if they charge way more money than you think is fair, you're not going to approve the contract. We don't know the terms yet.
Right.
So there has to be a vote later on the terms. Whether the questions are answered or not, I don't know, but there's going to be a vote on the contract, and there has to be.
But there'll be an opportunity at least to ask those questions at that point. Okay. All right, let's go to item C, discussion of knife ordinance amendment. That's attachment three in your agenda package. Basically, this is to conform with state law, I believe, regarding our parks ordinance and to comply with state law. Do you have any questions on that?
Is that really a knife? Was it a knife and gun?
Well, there's two different state laws. State law allowing guns in public parks passed a year or so ago, and then this is not. We should have, the ordinance should have been changed when the gun statute passed. So the city can no longer prohibit guns nor knives in city parks. So we're removing that part of the ordinance.
Thank you, legislature, ask what you got, but.
And the question that come up about what's a knife, under the concept, and the definition of knife is anything over five inches. So anything under four inches is unregulated anyway. Five inches or less would be unregulated.
That will be on our July 19th meeting. Discussion of alcohol ratio ordinance amendment, which is attachment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, this was one I think we've talked about quite a bit, and I've been requesting this for about two years, but because of the reformation, burly people coming into downtown Canton, and they ask for this, plus changing the ordinance conforms to state law, and it makes us equal to all the surrounding communities instead of giving our merchants a disadvantage. So we're not, we're not doing anything extraordinary here, we're just conforming to our surroundings and to state law.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Canna?
Is there a reason why we couldn't go 40-60 and encourage more businesses to come here because we're better than the surrounding communities?
Is there a reason we couldn't do that?
Except on Sundays, but now you don't have to have a food requirement at all.
You know, we, if we did that.
Except for brew pubs, would then have, if you eliminated it for everybody else, a brew pub is defined under state law as requiring 50, at least 50%.
At least.
We could change that, so you would be changing it for everybody else but not for the brew pub. The brew pub would still, brew pubs can have 50% no matter what. We can make it higher if we want, but we can't make it lower.
Mr. Mayor?
I understand that, so a brew pub has to have 50% sales of food at least, but we could approve a bar next door with no food.
Right.
As long as they were closed on Sunday.
Correct. Alcohol on Sunday.
This one doesn't stand.
But that's because the definition of brew, brew pub is defined, and it's a special thing because they're allowed to manufacture beer and sell it there. So the state law, the state's intent is that you sell as part of a restaurant.
Can I follow up with real quick? Mentioned two weeks ago about the possibility of making it 40-60 just in the downtown district. Did we get any clarification if we can do that?
I gave it some thought, and I think you can.
Zonked.
Because it's, you would be doing it to encourage, as you stated, encourage business to come to downtown, which would be a legitimate reason. You have to have a good reason basically to make that law, you can't just arbitrarily do it, but you have a basis for it.
We have a police station downtown too, you know.
Sounds like a good idea.
I think, I think going to 40-60 gives us a leg up on the other communities, and particularly if we restrict it to the downtown area, that gives the downtown a little more incentive of people to come into downtown.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. And once again, as usual, I'm slow. 40, food, 60, oh, so we say 40-60. Then I think that the 40-60 should be citywide. I realize that it would be an opportunity for downtown also to people who want to come in, to come into downtown area. And if I'm not mistaken, just what you said about the brew pub, it's got to be 50-50. So this ordinance, what we're looking at currently was just 50-50. So are we saying we want to change it to the 40-60, and we can't do anything about the brew pub except it's 50-50?
Well, it would fit, wouldn't it? We wouldn't, we wouldn't need to do anything.
Do anything because that.
With the 40-60, we wouldn't need to do anything for the 50-50 for the brew pub. They would, they would be applying.
So I'm going to ask Councilman Rush, if he's the one who's bringing this forward as the ordinance, would he entertain the thought of making it 40-60 versus what he has currently had here is 50? Because we're going to vote on it next week.
My first reaction is no, because I think 50-50 is what, is a level playing field for everybody. 40-60, you're starting to trend towards bars, which I don't think anybody in the community wants to have a bar in Canton, at least from discussing, discussions with people prior, prior to, you know, bringing the alcohol ordinance up to date two years ago. And now I think 50-50 is quite adequate, and I really, I mean, I would support if somebody would make the motion to do that, but I really don't think it's necessary, and I wouldn't do it.
Well, 40, right now, what you see in reporting by the resumes there is, you know, under the 60-40, what you're seeing reported by and large, 60-40, okay? They're very close both ways, 60-40, 60-40. If it were 40-60, we could stand perhaps to even gain as much as 20% revenue on alcohol sales. Don't believe it'd be quite that much, but it potentially could be. So, you know, I think it might be worth the effort, and any place that serves 40% of their sales is food, you know, they might be a little more honest too to some of the very, if it were spread out a little bit, a little more leeway. And, because what's the odds of every month or every quarter of coming up 60-40? Do you think that at the end of the month, they're looking, hey, I've got, I've got 58, 32, or whatever it is, 58, 42? Do you think they suddenly cut off selling alcohol so they can equalize it out? It doesn't happen that way.
No.
But when you see the reports coming 60-40, 60-40, you know, sometimes it makes you wonder really what's what might be. And 40-60, I mean, you know, that's a pretty good leeway, gives us a leg up on these other jurisdictions within the county, and I think we need that leg up.
Well, I consider 40-60 for just the downtown district, as we discussed, 50-50 citywide, but 40-60 for the downtown area as a, as a reason to encourage more business to come in.
I guess I really don't see any harm in that. I really don't think that's going to be any kind of advantage, but if you want to do it, fine. But if I'm not mistaken, and I asked Mr. Wood this and Mr. Dyer, the reporting, I think, is done quarterly, isn't it? Not done monthly?
I don't remember what the ordinance.
I think the ordinance, the ordinance changed it to quarterly, so they don't do it monthly just to level out those peaks and valleys. But, yeah, if somebody wanted to make it 40-60 for downtown and 50-50 the rest of the city, I have no objection to it, I just don't think it's going to do much.
Well, I'll let you make the motion since you're leading it. I was just asking the question, should it be considered of it?
Considered, but I won't do it.
Anyone else have a comment? Discussion?
Question?
Yes.
This is our, is this our first reading?
This is considered the first reading.
And it stands as is? Or correct?
I mean, we could, it could be changed before the second reading. That's the purpose of first and second reading.
Right.
It's allowed for change, but this is the first reading of this version.
And it has not been changed?
Correct.
It has not been changed? Is there, is there a consensus, Mr. Canna?
Well, my question is, can we by motion change it at the second reading?
Yes.
Any other discussion?
Is there a, let me ask this, is there a consensus there that we would maybe move forward and maybe ask Bobby to prepare another draft that would be 40-60 in the CDVD zone district and 50-50 in all other subsidiaries?
No.
Yes. No?
Well, there is a consensus, I guess, with that.
So.
Go ahead, here.
Yes. One, yes? Yes? No?
No.
No? Yes. Okay. Yes, okay. So. How do you prepare that?
Yeah, can, I'm still a little squeamish about the CDV, or CDB.
That's the downtown district.
Well, the CBD, I think, goes beyond the downtown district and goes further out to Main Street, so.
How would you, could we define it?
I would do a geographic.
To the Main Street problem, what they have, as their downtown core district, would it be that?
If that's defined.
They do have a map.
I just want a geographic definition, and so we would want to know where the boundaries would be, because we could just do streets, go, you know, Main Street, North Street, from here to here.
Yeah. You could do that, of course, with the down, Main Street.
I'll see what definition they have.
That we, they do have a map for that downtown core.
Does Sandy Hook, include Sandy Hook?
I think it does. See, I think it goes down to the river down there.
This is going to be fun.
It always is. All right. Next, discussion of fire service options. On that, I just wanted to reiterate where we were the last time, being the various options that we had, and we'll pick up another one tonight, I believe. But, you know, currently, our citizens, most residents would pay approximately $250 or 2.88 meals, taxes for the fire service. If we were to, we have a choice, we can just maintain our current ISO rating, at least we believe that's the case, with very little extra effort, and continue to pay around $230 on a $200,000 home, and the seniors would pay zero. If we were to add one new fire station, and the operating cost, we would be in the neighborhood of $360, $380 on a $200,000 homes, and the senior would pay zero. If we added two new fire stations, we'd be in the neighborhood of $530 plus or minus on a $200,000 home, and seniors would pay zero. And the option for consolidation with Cherokee County, at that point, we would have the two new fire stations, two alleys that's based in the city, and EMT, Cross Train Fire new fire stations, two ambulances based in the city and EMT cross-trained firefighters. And we would be paying, if it were this year, 3.129 meals, which would be about $20 above what we're paying now, being the 250, 260 range on a $200,000 home. And seniors would pay under that situation.
That's important to note that either or, seniors are going to be paying for the fire service, either with the county or with the city. Because if it goes with the county, they're going to pay for the service. And to get the adequate fire protection that we've talked about numerous times, the way to do it is for this to have a fire service district and a tax on that for its senior citizens. Now, what's interesting is, we always seem to kind of leave off a cross-training. The city fire department is cross-trained. The city does have excellent fire department. And also, it's interesting enough that we do have, it was proven so when we had this terrible tragedy of the apartment fire a couple of weeks ago, that we do have an agreement of mutual aid that was signed on the second of October, 2007, which says that all different fire departments, including the county, will come to the aid of other cities, or the cities will go to the aid of the counties if needed. And that will be taken care of, but it seems like the county has forgotten about this agreement of mutual aid. And it is an excellent document. I had the privilege of taking a course two weeks ago down in Savannah in reference to tragic emergency situations and did some research. And we do have a good program. Now, it comes down to the fact that either or, our good citizens, all of them, are going to be faced with the fact that we're going to have a fire district tax, either it's going to be by county or it's going to be by the city, to accomplish the goals we want to accomplish.
I believe, I believe, Mr. Barrisford, you're into the next item on the agenda. Should we go ahead and bring it in before we move forward that discussion?
Well, it, it says options. And options-
I believe that I said that there would be an additional option discussed at the next item on the agenda, so.
Okay. I'll be more happy to.
You can get right back as soon as we go to that out, okay?
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, discussion of fire district ordinance and your attachment there is number five.
Yes, I concur with Mr. Barrisford in that there seems to be some misinformation out in the community that this option is going to cause an increase in rates to the seniors and is trying to avoid the senior exemption, property tax. It has nothing to do with that, as Mr. Barrisford pointed out. If we merge with the county, that same tax will be applied by the county. And all I'm saying with this creating of this fire district ordinance is that we, we take the 2.88, if that's the number, out of the millage rate, apply a fire district tax to all residents, which, and then if at some point, we think that, and rather I'd see, I'd rather see us give the money to Canton than the residents give the money to Cherokee, and we still retain our ISO rating. If down the road, after we've had this for a while and we decide to merge, then maybe we could do that. But I'm frankly not in favor of a merger, because we have three to four million dollars worth of property and equipment, five million, that the residents of Canton paid for, and I can't see just giving it away. But creating a fire district ordinance will allow us to assess the fire, fire tax, and the seniors will pay, but they would have paid anyway if we merged with Cherokee. So I think this is the best way for us to go, and that's why I'm suggesting it.
Mr. Rush is correct in that no matter which way you go, when you put the fire district tax within the city or district within the city and have a tax, or whether you merge with the county, the impact on seniors using the millage rate of 3.129, it's the same impact. There's no argument with that. The basic difference is, if we do a citywide fire district and impose that millage rate, the senior revenue, or the revenue generated from seniors from this tax equates to $269,000, more or less. The additional revenue from other taxpayers, because we only reduced by 2.88 the general millage, the additional revenue would be approximately $167,000. Or a total new revenue generation of, or tax, whatever you want to call it, of $436,000. That $436,000 will not buy you one fire station, let alone two fire stations with two ambulances. So we're going to sit there with $436,000 and have no ability with that money or without increasing revenue somewhere else of building a fire station in the north part of the city or building a fire station in the east part of the city. We will have to generate additional revenues somewhere else. So my objection to it is very simply put, is that I don't think, A, that we should be imposing this tax without the ability to show an improved benefit to those seniors. If we're just going to say, all right, we've got $436,000, we can't build a darn thing with it, what good is that? The second objection I have to it is that I don't know why we're even discussing doing this at this point, because the impact of even doing this fire district won't have any impact until fiscal year 2014. The revenue will not, or the tax would not appear on a tax bill, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Dyer, but will not appear on a tax bill until the tax bills are distributed in October of 2013. Isn't that correct?
That's correct, but the millage rate will have to be determined-
Before January.
Well, when you do the budget, this can, right? I got that right? So I mean, you had to create the district before you can charge, assess the millage rate. So I don't, now is when you had to create the district.
Yeah, you would set the millage rate next year, because you wouldn't know what the assessed digest would be January the first of 2013 until you did.
When you adopt your budget this fall, you set a millage rate.
Well, yeah, but it's, it's the entire general fund, a portion of which goes to the fire service.
But if you created the fire district now, couldn't you adopt the millage rate when you're doing the budget?
Yeah, but the millage rate isn't for, until fiscal 2014, and we won't be working on that budget until a year from now. The millage rate we're now setting is for fiscal 2013 and has no bearing on whether we have a fire district or not. Fire district would have to be decided, I agree with you, before January.
I mean, when, you set your millage rate for your general operation, what, in the fall? To start, to take effect in January 2013, which is being collected in the fall of 2013.
Right. No, you set your millage rate-
When you set the millage rate-
During the year in which your budget is approved.
Because we have leftover fiscal year.
Well, yeah, but the property that is on the books as of January 1 of a year, that's what you use to set your millage rate with, right? And you can set your millage rate at another year, other than the year that you're taxing. And we would prepare a budget next summer, okay? Prepare a budget next summer based on the property that existed January 1 of 2013. See what I'm saying?
So we, we have to set it before January. We'd have to determine if it-
We'd set it just like we would normally do this year. And then next year, it would be a separate distinct district, and it would be set separately at that point.
When you pass the budget, when you pass it, October, when the budget has to be passed at a certain time?
Right, sure.
Because there's a millage rate set in there.
And that gets to be paid by the involved.
Right. If that didn't collect it in the next two months?
It's October, it's the next three months, so that's correct.
That's, you send the bills out based on that millage rate that you've just-
Absolutely, absolutely, yes. Mr. Barrisford?
I just want to-
Would there be something that you couldn't do after this year? Sorry.
That's all right.
Yeah, I don't think you could. Go ahead.
Being this is a work session, I can say a few things here. My esteemed colleague, Mr. Cunningham, wants to do research. And one of the things that we had as a committee, and we had six options, and I still like to look at one, two, three, four, five. Immediately, we jumped to six. We've got the county just hovering over us to make a decision right away to give up the city fire department and to go with the county. It seemed like we just skipped a number of things. I say that we have time. We all will have an ISO for. We're making some changes. We have a year or so. This has been dragging on for many years, and it's not time to go rushing in and saying, we're out of here, take it over. We do have the time, and we do have the time to study the facts. Now, to build a fire department, we're going to have to have a bond. We aren't just going to come up with the money. The money, I think, that is being looked at as far as this fire service tax is to have to put personnel in, we've got to pay personnel once we build these buildings. So we don't have to build two right away. We can build one. Or we don't have to build one within the next year. We can take our time. The problem is, we haven't looked at all the options, and council hasn't had an opportunity to dialogue on all the options, and I think that's what we're trying to do right now, and throw these out. But I just want to be put on the agenda two weeks for a motion.
One comment, I just want to build on what Mr. Barrisford said. When we had our meeting with Cherokee County and they presented the case to merge the two fire departments, I asked the question, what's the advantage to Cherokee? And the response from, I believe it was Mr. Cooper, said that there is none. Well, if there is no advantage to Cherokee, why are they being so benevolent and want to take us over? The one thing I did read in the paper was, after that, was one of the county commissioners said that they were going to take our ladder truck and move it out to the airport. So it appears they've got a master plan on what they want to do with our fire department. And I think that as long as we can, if we create the fire district and pass the, pass the fire tax, we still aren't doing anything different than if we merge with the county. The only thing we're doing is trying to keep our ISO ready.
Mr. Mayor, I don't have a preference one way or the other. But what I hate, and Mr. Barrisford has just hit on it, is that we are coming up with step one, and we don't even know what step two, three, four, and five is. And I'll throw it out, and Mr. Barrisford says, we got time? Well, then come with a plan that takes and develops our city fire department to meet the needs that our consultant has said that we require. Don't come with just step one and saying, we'll figure out step two later. Do the whole plan. I don't care which way we really go, but I hate voting on these things that we got half the answers to and saying, we got to rush this through, when there is absolutely zero sense of urgency to do anything about a fire district. The second thing is, I'll go back to Mr. Barrisford's statement, that he says we really need to think this through. And that's exactly the way I feel about our pension benefits.
Let me, and you hit on something that I made some notes here and eventually we'll get to here. But regarding a plan, and I think I mentioned some of that here, but let me, let me make a few comments. In the late 1990s, the voters of the city of Canton passed overwhelmingly a homestead property tax exemption for seniors 62 and above. Around 97% voted in favor of it. This exemption was intended to help seniors, many of whom are on fixed income, some with social security only. It is clear that when one becomes a senior, medical bills increase, drug bills increase, and many experience difficulty meeting utility bills, all while their income is remaining the same or maybe decreasing, and while prices of other essentials are going up. And we all know that there are many seniors who can afford to play a fire team, we know that. But there are some that it makes it very difficult. The proposal to establish a fire district, which is before this council, is somewhat of a scheme simply to bypass the will of the voters who passed senior tax exemptions several years ago. This proposal will not provide enough revenue to meet the long-term needs of our fire service, but will only increase property taxes on everyone, including seniors. I cannot support this very disingenuous scheme to do an in-run around the senior exemption. And that's exactly what, what this is. If it were bringing in enough revenue to do what we needed to do to improve our fire service, maybe so. But it's not. But we do have an alternative that is, as a matter of fact. The only way to achieve the improvements needed now in our fire service, in my opinion, is consolidation with Cherokee County. According to Mr. Cooper, we do not have an automatic aid agreement with Cherokee County. We did have one, and it is outdated and was never, was not renewed when we had their discussion of the House Bill 489, I believe, it didn't get updated. Any major event now already requires the assistance of Cherokee County. Our city responds to all emergencies in the city. However, in major events, Cherokee County has the horsepower to deliver untold numbers of firefighters and equipment. Cherokee County is the dominant force in this type of emergency. Even at the Canterbury Ridge fire recently, more than 30 county firefighters were on the scene and apparently took charge. Even discussions with the media were led by a county fire representative. Now the question arises, do we want a fire district designed only to avoid the senior exemption, which will not provide the revenue essential to meet the critical needs of our fire service? Or do we want to improve our fire service for little or no additional cost? Cherokee County has made an offer. I do not believe that our citizens are concerned about who provides this service, so long as it is an improved service at a reasonable cost. If we approve the proposed fire district, there will be unreasonable costs, and we will continue with the current level of service and forego the badly needed fire stations, two ambulances based in our city, and firefighters cross-trained as emergency medical technicians. All of our firefighters are not cross-trained, by the way. Cherokee County has offered us a way to have these improvements without torturing our residents by steadily increasing taxes. And this would require seniors to pay for the improvement, is what seniors would pay under that. But if you're going to pay, you'll be getting something for your money. I don't, you know, we have had, we have allowed others to operate our water and sewer system in the past probably 20 years. No one that I know has said this is really a bad thing. With all respect, our firemen, respect for our firemen and our fire department, we all respect our firemen and fire department. But when, but when to look at the economics of the situation and the level of service we will have over the next few years, the economics must have the advantage over emotion. I hope you will consider directing our city manager to work out a draft agreement with Cherokee County and bring that to our work session for discussion. And if this council chooses, consider the adoption at a future meeting. Our residents deserve the best. This city has been so far behind from neglect and an overburdened, and overburdened by debt, by no fault of anyone on this council, that we cannot catch up to where we need to be without some serious changes. I believe one of those changes is to consolidate our fire department with Cherokee County. Out of the seven cities located in our county, only Canton and Woodstock go along with their fire departments. We should unite with these other cities and county for the provision of our fire protection services. I would like to ask our city manager to provide us a five to 10-year plan for meeting our fire service needs before this council chooses to implement this expensive fire district. I would like for our city manager to provide the expected level of service, as well as the cost involved, and the increase in taxes required to meet the plan. If we cannot meet the county's offer in five years, should we continue to limp along on our own? I challenge this council city manager to bring forth a plan which will provide what the county is offering at a cost equal or less to that of the county. I don't think this is too much to ask before we jump- I don't think this is too much to ask before we jump into the fire, so to speak, and create a tax-eating monster. Since we could not start collecting taxes for this district before late 2013 and early 2014, there is no urgency to implement a tax district. So, we have plenty of time, I believe, to do the right thing.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I like the phrase you had there to start off with, it's called in-run. I think that's exactly what the county is trying to do to the city of Canton. And in this mutual agreement aid program, item article nine, term ten, paragraph nine point zero, this agreement shall become a valid contract of emergency services at the time of all parties sign and seal the agreement. And each agency, which means county and city, is all elected officials in an open meeting entered to on minutes. Interesting, the term of the agreement shall automatically renew January first of each year thereafter. We don't have to go and come up with a new contract every year.
Well, we just need to convey that information to the county manager, because he's under a lot of pressure. And that was as recent as this afternoon, so, you know, if he's under the wrong, you know, I'm sure he'll stand corrected.
Okay. And, and the second part is that, uh, that same individual in March the second, 1898, was city manager of Woodstock. And he wrote a three, uh, maybe seven, eight-page document here saying that city of Woodstock would not entertain the thought of going to be part of Cherokee County water. Uh, and he had a list of excellent reasons, and a lot of them match up.
Cherokee County what?
He would not.
Entertain, do what now?
Entertain to be part of Cherokee.
Fire or water?
Fire.
Oh, I see.
I'm sorry, if I said water or fire.
Right.
I want to put a little water on the thing. I want to put a little water on the thing, kind of dampen it down just a little bit. But you know what I'm saying? We're talking fire here. And interestingly, you just pointed out, and Woodstock still has decided to join, uh, with the Cherokee County Fire Department. And neither has Canton. Now, I agree with you wholeheartedly, and the fact is that we don't have to go rushing off down the road here. We do have the time. But we've got to make a commitment, as Councilman Cummings said. Let's make a commitment. But I think we should continue to look at these options. And we've got breathing down our neck this Cherokee County, and we don't need it. We, we need to look at ourselves and see what we can do. And if it requires taxation, it's taxation. Which is, I've been referred to the fact, I'll say one last thing. I'm committing political suicide by stating what I'm stating. But that's what I'm all about, being upfront knowledge.
Thank you, Mr. Barrisford. The only thing that I, that I would say in, in response at all is that I, I would like to see if they offered Woodstock what they have offered to Cherokee to the city of Canton. If they are equals, then, you know, I will go back and take another look.
Mr. Mayor, you've charged the city manager with a task of coming up with a five-year program or a five-year projection of how the city can handle its fire services and come up with an equal level of service. And I suggest that Mr. Barrisford being so strongly wanting to do this, that the two of them vote together and come to council with such a plan, and we then have something to compare.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I, I feel I have to respond, because I resent your implication that this is trying to get around the senior property tax exemption. Because it has nothing to do with the senior property tax exemption. If we merge with the county, as you insist, or we create a fire district, the tax that the people are going to pay is going to be the same amount of money. So, there's no in-run, there's no reduction of the property tax exemption, nothing. It's the same amount of money, and it, and, and we're just obfuscating the facts here.
Let me say this, there is no way it would be the same amount of money for two fire stations, two amelice stations here, and, and all of the firemen cross-trained. It will not be the same amount of money that we're talking about.
I'm just talking about the tax. I'm not talking about what we're going to do with it. I'm just talking about the tax.
Well, I'm talking about improving our fire service. And that's, that's where we need to be talking, I think. So, we, I guess we've got more to talk about next time, won't we, like? All right, let's move on.
Let me, let me make one point clear. The mayor suggested a five-year plan, but now I need that direction from city council. That's council pleasure.
We need that, I mean, I think it'd be good to have a plan. I think we need a plan. We need to see what exactly we want to do each year in order to improve, improve our fire service, and what it's going to cost us. Is that asking too much?
Mr. Barrisford.
I was volunteered, I'll be more than happy to step in there and work with Mr. Wood. As long as nobody thinks that I'm going in with a preset mind, which I am.
I would appreciate your, your, you doing that if you wanted.
Like I say, I think a five-year plan is good, a ten-year plan is good. It's always good to plan, but, but the variables out there in the future are so unknown. Five years ago, we were being told that our population was going to be, fifty thousand people in the city of Canton by just about now or another few more years. And it looked like it was. But of course, that's, that stopped. So, you know, any plan we come up with has got to be, be based on, on all these assumptions everywhere. But all, all we're asking to do right now is to create a, a, a tax district. This, this ordinance doesn't even fund it. This doesn't even state what the milit rates would be, although we are, we are saying that they would basically cancel each other out. I still don't understand why they don't, dollar for dollar, just cancel each other out. But it's pretty close. But it's, 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 it's a good start. I mean, collecting three or four hundred thousand dollars is, is a good, good start towards a fire station. And all these, all these facts are just swirling around in my mind. We're going to keep our ISO of four by just spending, I think it's ten or twelve thousand dollars? Six thousand dollars. We don't have to build any fire station now to keep our ISO of four. The county's ISO currently is five. Nobody knows if there's, if they're going to keep theirs or, or, or not. Planning is a good thing, but right now, it's not that broke. But we do need to look towards the future, and that's what we're doing by creating this fire district. Everybody will be then paying their fair share. The city of Canton will continue to have a fire department we can be proud of. We will continue to cooperate with the county. And, and I think it's a great step forward.
So, basically, what you're saying, if I understand what you're saying, is, is that we're pretty much going to stay status quo, except seniors will start paying. Is that pretty much what you're saying?
I said what I said, Gene. I mean, it's, 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 I don't want to make it any more clear than what I said.
I'm kind of slow.
I didn't say a word about seniors. I don't believe, did I say a word about seniors?
Yeah.
No, sir.
It's about the same amount of money. It would be about the same amount of money. A district does, it does change senior situation.
I, I, I'm not discussing anything to do with seniors. I'm talking about the fire district act as it is proposed, and it's going to be proposed and voted on two weeks from now.
I don't really know how you can discuss that without discussing seniors, because it makes a big change in the senior homestead exemption, because it doesn't weigh with, just kind of...
One last point.
Excuse me, it does not do away with the senior homestead.
Sorry, I have the floor at this time, Mr. Barrisford. I do have a floor. And I'm not yielding it until I finish what I say.
Well, I'm prepared, while you finish.
The last, at the last voting meeting, I made a motion to proceed with developing a plan with the county, which was defeated, and that's fine, I don't have any preference. My preference is, I want a plan. I don't want to sit here a year from now talking the same thing. And that plan was to proceed with the county along a certain basis of getting two needed fire stations. Now, I behooves, or I accept any argument from anybody here that we have not paid a consultant thirty thousand dollars that tells us we need those two fire stations. It is there in black and white. Whether we keep our ISO four rating with a minimal amount, which he also said we could, but he also said that we were not providing a level of service that we desire to have without adding those two fire stations. So, if my plan or my suggestion at the last meeting is unacceptable to this council, fine, I can live with that. But please give me an alternative. And an alternative would have to say, "Step one, we'll do this without having a visualization of what steps follow and how we're going to get there and what they're going to cost."
Okay. This is the alternative. We're giving you the alternative. It takes money. It, we all agree with that, it takes money. We have agreed to not merge with the county. That's not going to happen. Five to one, we affirmed that six months ago, we voted on it two weeks ago. That's not going to happen. We need to stop talking about that. It's not going to happen. I know there's going to be a big meeting tomorrow, but with this council, it's just not going to happen. So, let's move on with that. We're not going to merge with the county. We do need to continue to plan for the future. And the first step is to, we have to start collecting money, setting it aside. It's called savings. It's called paying as you go. We've not done that in this city, not this particular body, but we always just borrow it and then figure it out. But we're changing that. We're going to start saving up to build a fire station. You have four hundred thousand, it's not going to build it in the first year, but it might build it in the second or the third year. It's good business. That's what's going to happen. It's, it is planning, and, and, Gene, I got to tell you, we're not doing away with the senior tax exemption.
So, where's the four hundred thousand going to come from, then?
We're not doing away with the senior tax exemption.
Where's the four hundred thousand going to come from, you're talking about?
The fire district.
Where, where's it coming from, though?
The fire district tax. It's coming from the taxpayers in the city of Canton.
The extra four hundred thousand I'm talking about, not the, all the rest of the money, not the two million. I'm talking about the extra four hundred thousand. It's coming from senior exemptions being deleted. I think we talked about this issue.
We can disagree.
I think, I think we talked about that. And we're going to talk about it more, of course, so we can have that. Yes, go ahead.
You know, if you look in the, every, every night in the news, you see different cities succeeding, run the counties, becoming their own cities. Sandy Springs, Dunnwoodie, went down in Peachtree City, Milton. You know, if, if counties were such great things to run everything, why would these cities be doing that? You know, we've got a great city, we've got great facilities, we've got super people. We just need to sit down, figure out exactly a plan to do that. Mr. Barrisford, I'd be glad to help you in that community. But we just need to do that. I don't think we need to give away the city. They're looking for us to give away our equipment, our buildings, our runnings. You know, why do we need a city if we're going to do that? We might as well just change it to just Cherokee County.
Thank you, Gene, appreciate it. Okay, let's see. Discussion of reservoir launch site lease. We have, uh, that is attached for six. And I suspect there may be some discussion of questions on that. I suspect, I do have a couple of questions myself, that I'm sure others may as well. But I'm assuming that, basically, to meet the requirements of the lease, I spoke with Mr. Wood and Dave earlier today, that we would have to have some kind of gate, fence, cable, or something to secure the access to the canoe launch area there in order to meet the requirements of the lease, which says that it will be closed to the public between dusk and dawn. But I guess there's other, there's other things there. I mean, you know, maybe we have to move forward and, you know, kind of, as we see things happen, you know, make adjustments along the way. But, you know, I don't think you can swim in the lake, from what I can understand. You can't get out and picnic on the other side, maybe around the canoe launch, but you can't step outside the, of the water if you're in a canoe. You can't picnic on other property on the other side because it's private property, and the city has just a leased buffer there. Or an easement buffer, I should say. I'm not sure that we know what the penalties or violation for some of these things are at this point, for someone caught in there after hours that hadn't paid their money, or whatever. Do we have, do we have any of that? We don't have that yet. I, I understand that the police will be patrolling it. And I don't know if we have, if we have enough rules and regulations there just yet to, to understand. I mean, can I get on a, blow up a raft and get out there and float on it? Or if I have to be in at the nude? I'm not sure what the answer is, I'm not sure.
Throw me your phones.
Pretty good. Very good.
I think it's a great idea to open it up, and I'm all in favor of it. But like you, I sat down and I asked a lot of questions, right, Gene? What are the initial costs? I haven't got any clue what are our hard costs, our, our soft costs? Mr. Cant Jimmy's time? What hours that the access will be open to the public? Are there established rules covering the usage of the reservoir? We know Cherokee County has a reservoir, they have open public access. Do they have rules? Will our rules be posted? Like you said, hasn't been clearly defined as to what kind of floating device. Pretty soon, if we let a raft out there, then we're going to be allowing intertubes. And then they're not swimming, they're floating, or whatever the case. Are there ordinance in place and fines established for violations? I don't know about that. Who's going to be responsible for opening and closing the gated entrance? Is it possible to access the parking area around the closed gate with a vehicle? Can we get there at night? Has the maintenance of the area been calculated as to what it's going to cost us to do it? Are there resources available to do this? Will the fee be charged for the usage? If so, how much? Are we going to use the Honor Box system in the Cherokee? Or are we going to have somebody that's standing there collecting it? What sort of estimate do we have for res, revenues that might come out of there? Who will be responsible for the trash collection and site pickup? You know, somebody mentioned that we'd have somebody there during the hours that it was open. Can we afford this personnel monitoring? Who's responsible for any accidents or incidents at the reservoir? How will they be reported? I know in all swimming pools, it's law to have a nine-eleven, nine-one-one connection. Will we have a nine-one-one connection there? Is it required? I don't know the answer to that. Are we going to prevent boats? How are we going to prevent boats from getting close to the dam? What is going to be in place to prevent access or trespassing in areas other than the authorized access point? And last but not least, has the Cobb County Mariana Water Authority signed off on the plan? I think in section four oh six, it's a little vague. But, you know, we should be saying, "Here's, here's what we're intent." Now, we have the rights to do it, but have they signed off? These are just all questions that I think should be answered before we swing open the gates and allow people just to, you know, just go in and use it. Thank you.
Mr. Ross.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One question or comment I would, would have is, I, I know the residents, and I personally would like to see the lake available for public use. And there are restrictions, and I think there's in the, I can't remember what they call it, the, the, the master plan, that it has, it has requirements. But if we're intent on getting rid of the reservoir, it's conceivable that the, if we're successful, it's conceivable that whoever buys it can say, "You can't use the lake." And that's a possibility, is that, Mr. Dyer?
Possibility, because we wouldn't be a part of the agreement.
Exactly. And, and so then, I'm saying, we're going to invest taxpayer money in the launch site that if we get rid of the thing, we may not be able to use anyway. So, that's another question from Mr. Cummings' list. So, that's another question for Mr. Cummins' list.
But we may be a long ways from getting rid of it.
At a prior meeting, in response to the question about cost, Mr. Cummins, either a meeting or in a, in a, in a letter I sent to council, it might have been a letter, we suggested $15,000 in cost. So, I think there's a budget number that's been established, and I think the plan is admitted in rudimentary in that it would not involve paving, it would involve somewhat unsophisticated fence, probably a cable system, gate. Ordinances and fines have not been addressed. Rules and regulations have, and I think the rules and regulations that are being anticipated simply mirror those of Hollis Latham. Maintenance and trash will obviously have to be handled by staff. You know, there's a real simple way to, to eliminate all of those concerns, and that is just don't build one site up there. Now, people have to remember, that lake is not a recreational lake. I know, I know there's being a perception promoted that it is. That lake is a water reservoir and is not built as a recreational facility. The city has chosen to incorporate recreational uses into it. The city can choose to unincorporate recreational uses if there's too many concerns about, about recreational use.
Yes.
Lake Allatuna's not a recreational lake either, is the reservoir. But, I mean, guys, we, we, we got to move forward at some point in time. I mean, our taxpayers have paid $30 million for this thing on the city of Canton side. If we sell it, we can add $15,000. We can make our new sale price $30 million and $15,000. Staff has, has, has got a plan. They're, they're recommending we move forward with this. We're not going to have every question answered. There's going to be more questions come up as we go along. Staff can, can take care of that. If they need our decisions on some of it, they'll come to us and ask us. Let's, let's let our people use this thing they're paying for, for some, let's get out and, and, you know, put inner tubes on it or canoes. What's the big deal? Let's, let's open it up to the people. Let the staff be in charge of it, and, and let's move forward with this as issues come up. We'll take care of them.
I concur. The only thing I think at the same time that we authorize is moving forward in the use of it, that we designate responsibility to answer all of these issues and to have a plan for it, not just because we now got it open, let's forget, we don't need to do anything else.
I agree with that. Well, let me say that I think that, you know, should, should we convey the reservoir to someone else, I, I think it would be very likely that we could reserve that utilization as part there in the future, because I don't think they would want to do that, and they, that would be our cost to keep it clean and everything else around there. So, I, I really think that we could, we could work that out, so. But at any rate, we've, we've talked about this, the, this should not, we've got a lot of things to work out as far as the utilization of that area is concerned, but, but the lease will be up, up on the 19th that we can consider it. That's really what we're talking about, is there anyone that has any concern about the lease itself. And I don't know. Okay, so we'll, we'll act on that on the 19th. Item H, discussion of master plan for Heritage Park. I still really believe that we need to ask our city manager to engage the services of someone to plan how the future, in the future, we'll be utilizing Heritage Park. Now, we've got, you know, we got a large area there, a very large area, and I know Mr. Huffman has been very outspoken on that, but we need to go ahead and plan how we would like to see it utilized over the next few years, and then as time allows, we can add to on an annual basis maybe, or every couple of years, add something as we can afford it to that park. So, that, that's my opinion. I would like to suggest that we, we ask that we engage the services of someone to plan how that park should be utilized to its fullest. So, I guess anybody else will do that. Oh, I'm sorry, Jack.
As I said last meeting, I would agree with that. I like, you know, I think most of us want to see more activities over there than it not just be a passive park, because we have Bowlin, which is a very good passive park already. I think bicycle issue has been one that's kind of gone back and forth, but some very easy ways to do that, to make that not interfere. And since we're finally going to get that a walk part, we're just going to have some activities, but we're lacking some things there. Maybe we could incorporate that in this plan with Heritage. I think it'd be a great idea.
Anyone else have any comments? Okay. That one over there. What's with the next one?
You said something about we'd have Mr. Wood look into finding somebody that will be able to come back and make some recommendations. Is that what we're going to have done?
That's, that's what I'd ask, yes.
Yes, okay. So, so noted.
Okay, thank you. Item, let's see, under new business, item A, discussion of leasing the vacant lot down down attachment seven. Basically, what, what this is, is there's three property owners there with a drugstore burner, okay, on the corner of church and a main street. And Mr. Dyer's drawn up a lease agreement that we can, our main street and others can, are willing to devote the time and effort and probably some money to paring, adding dirt to that, that hole, sodding it and making, maybe terracing it somewhat, making a sort of a mini amphitheater there. And can actually have permission, I know from Mr. Mason, who has an office, law office there, that they could actually show, maybe hang a screen or whatever down, and actually show some, some movies there of the outside. And I just want you to take a look at that. It's certainly going to be an improvement of course there, no doubt. I know Chuck Ware had indicated he'd be able, on some of the sites where he's working, you know, he can, he can provide us with the dirt. We may have to do some hauling ourselves, but he can load the truck from one of his sites that would help to fill it up, and several of them have volunteered to do some work there, but I think the cost would be minimal there, but there could certainly be an improvement. So, that's, that's what that's about. Does anybody have any questions? If I can answer my will.
Yes.
I'd like to say, I think that's a great idea, well, we get rid of that fence as long as this, obviously, the property owners have to be in agreement, but I know Ginger and some of her folks on that downtown development are working on it. Let's keep moving forward with that.
I think, I think we have, they have spoken to each of the three property owners and, and incorporated, I believe, in the lease what they had requested, so that, you know, it shouldn't really be any, and, you know, we could potentially, you know, two years from now, one of them may want to sell their property when they have to say, okay, and we may have to move some dirt out or something, but at least, you know, I don't know if anybody's going to sell anything right there real soon. Jack?
What's the term of the lease? It'll be a
Year to year.
Year to year, basically, because the city has to be able to get out of it each year. I, I prepared it. I'll email it around for everyone to look at, and I haven't said it's a property owner yet either, so.
So, we will have that hopefully to act on it. Yeah, when you email it around, we can look at it. If anybody has any comments or suggestions, then you can refer back to Bobby on that, and we'll act on that at our next meeting. Do we have to act first before they do or after they do?
I think the hope was that they will have a treaty to it before the 19th.
Signed off on it before the 19th, okay. Discussion, recommendation for water and wastewater operations contract. Let me say what the approach that was taken on that pretty much has been to solicit proposals, and the, the staff, Mr. Wood and others have, and our engineer from Infotech has, has looked at those, and basically, the approach was to, to, to look at them to see which one, after interviews and going through their submittal, qualifications and so forth, that they would sort of rank these in, in order of preference. And basically, they would choose one, hopefully, that they felt they could work with comfortably and move forward. Now, once, once they chose a firm to work with, they would then go back and attempt to negotiate a fee. There was fees submitted at the time, however, they haven't gotten to the negotiation stage, so it wouldn't be appropriate actually to discuss what those were at this point. But the, the staff and Mr. Wood can go back to the one that they liked the best, they felt had the best qualifications and could serve our needs the best, and negotiate a price with. I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor, I, I just have one question irrespective of the, of the bidders, but what's the purpose of going out for bids if you then you're going to take a bidder that may not be the low bid and negotiate? You either take bids or you don't take bids. I mean, I don't understand that part of the process.
Well, it's, it's a common practice where what you do is, is you take the, you look at the proposals of, of different firms, and you say, I like this one, it's highly qualified, this one's next, whatever, and I really like this one. This is the best one I think the city needs. Then you open up the envelopes after you've rated all them and look at the prices that they submitted. Well, if the one you really like is not the low bid, then you can negotiate with them and move downward. This is not an absolute bid deal. Gives you an idea of, of the range of, of quotes there. But what you need to do is, you know, you wouldn't want necessarily to take the low bid and qualifications too if all you were going to consider was the low bid. I mean, why take the qualifications, just let everybody bid and, and don't worry about the qualifications? Mr. Cuff?
The problem is that if you do it just strictly on a monetary basis without going into discussion what each means by keeping the facilities in a state of good repair, you, you come out of the first, like you say, the first process with a preference, and then you've got to now look at exactly what does that terminology? It's not a, it's not an exactness that you can specify as to what do you mean by keeping the, the facilities and maintaining it to the level that we should deserve or require to have. So, the, the process was originally designed, as I understood it, to first select the, the one that you like the best, and then do as you said, open the envelopes and see if we can't negotiate to that point who it was. And if, with council's approval, I think we hired a consultant to do this, that I'd like to ask with council's approval, that he comes up and explain to council why a particular vendor that has bid is, in his opinion, the best selection if the council approves.
Mr. Mayor, the only comment that I would have to that request is that I don't think the committee that evaluated this bidding process had, was uniform in their agreement, so if we get the consultant here, he has one recommendation, but I think other staff members have other recommendations. So, I don't know if that's, if that's a valid discussion to have, but, but, you know, I can honestly say that in 50 odd years of business, I've never seen a bidding process where you take the, take the high bidder, the middle bidder, and try and negotiate them down. If I were bidding to a company that operated like that, that would be the last bid I would ever submit.
Yes.
Our, I'm not sure if it's RFP or RFQ, request for proposals, it was an RFP. How, what was the framework there that the three bidders were, were operating under? Was that clearly stated how the process would work?
I think that's what we need to get in our engineer up here and
That's what Mr. Chuckler
And answer whatever questions you have.
Well, I, I got no problem with, with that. I'd also like to hear from the other three, I think, on the committee, which is Dave Potabian and who, who, Joby
Joby and Ken Patton.
Ken Patton, yeah. If they are all here too. I see Joby.
Okay. Potabian's here. They're all here.
They're all here.
They're all here.
Yeah. Gentlemen, our mayor, this is the city manager. Mr. Wood did point the committee, the forums, and we actually, we had sent out about eight or nine invitations to bid. Actually gave us a proposal, which was one proposal, and it had a pricing from them. We got to three proposals, and we had some fairly extensive interviews. I guess they lasted probably a couple of hours for all the firms. See, I believe, it's coming to set all those along with the mayor and the city manager and the council of Bush was in part of them. After the interviews, well, actually, we did a, we did a ranking, we did a technical ranking, and all those numbers came out quite close. We opened up the prices. There was a fair spread between the people that gave us prices. However, when you look at the things that were voted for us, we weren't really comparing apples with apples. For example, one of the firms gave us a severe, fairly severe undercount of staff that I certainly believe, and I think the other folks in the committee believe, were part of operating the service. Quite a bit, quite a bit of money and just taking a quote and say, well, we've got a lot less staff, we'll consider giving them the project based on this quote. But I didn't personally think it was reasonable. I don't think the other folks did that asleep to themselves. We also had, one of the firms provided a lot more equipment than the, than the other two. The equipment spreads made up quite a bit of the cost, it looks like, based on the cost comparison that we prepared. So, again, we didn't really have an apples and apples, monetary, monetary price. So, we went, we had a lot of discussion. We really couldn't come to an agreement on the, on the ranking, and we went back and forth, a lot of emails back and forth, a lot of spirited discussions, spent a lot of hours. And given the fact that we couldn't come up with a consensus, I provided you my personal recommendation, so I can go do, and the other folks can do the same. My recommendation was to, to go with the ESG. They were not the low price. However, having worked with the utility operations now for about 40 years, I felt like they had all the right things the city needed to move the system forward. The other companies were also very good firms. They, they got going businesses in other, other places and done this pretty well. I just felt like ESG was the top firm, and, and some of my principal reasons were, and I provided a letter to Mr. Wood earlier today, was that they have extremely high contractor yield rate, says to me their satisfaction, their customers is, is very good. They received a lot of awards. Operations, at least throughout Georgia, there's some very, very competitive awards for system operation. They've won a number of those in a number of different They've won a number of those, been at a number of different clients. Very flat organization, I feel like we can get quick decisions out of them. They've got a lot of good major maintenance capabilities. Some of the other firms have good capabilities in that area too, but they're focused on utility operations. They don't try to do a thousand things, they are a utility operations company, as is one of the other companies. The company headquarters in Georgia. They committed to retain the majority of the existing staff, should they make a transition. They have state-of-the-art information management systems, which is something that the system doesn't have right now. They have a lot of staff resources in Forsyth County, be available in an emergency. They do an awful lot of measurements, which I believe are important to running utility. You can measure, you can probably make it work better. Good expertise, very good expertise in water treatment. They've got one of the top water treatment operators to stay on their staff. Their project manager, very experienced, some folks didn't like some of the things he's done. I thought he was a pretty good guy, but he's been doing this about forty years. They have a very good weight as a benefitist, which keeps their staff, I think, their turnover rate pretty low. They're going to give us eight hundred thousand dollars of equipment, and they own an awful lot of predictive maintenance equipment, which is why we'll keep the equipment that the city owns. So, that was basically the reason for my recommendation. Process was a little bit messy, I guess, but when you have, I guess it's impossible to get an apples and apples comparison. I tried to look at the numbers and what would it be if you had the same amount of employees, rich firm, and about the same amount of equipment and so many things. They still would be number one as far as the price, but I think that's why we're negotiating with the firm that I've recommended to get the price.
Mr. Draxler, just one question, and I ask you this in private, but what- there's a substantial price differential between the two we're considering.
Correct.
Now, would the city be harmed by going with the low bidder?
Would the city be harmed by going with the low bidder? Yes, by- would they be harmed by going with the low bidder? That's a good question. I've thought about that long and hard. And my answer is this. I believe that the level of maintenance you're going to get with the company I've recommended is going to be superior to what you're getting now. And if you look at the value of these utility systems in the ground out there, to take the two plants, they're worth, if you had to replace them, they wear out. Replacement value is probably minimum fifty million dollars on those plants. If you have to look at the pipe system, water pipes, wastewater pipes, pumps, the replacement value of that is way, way over a hundred million dollars, probably in the two hundred million dollars, depending on like that type of business. It's a very large amount. So, I believe that if you get significantly better maintenance, that you're going to get less depreciation and you can save quite a bit of money on that side of the issue. Yes, you'll pay less, you pay less than the first cost. I think there's enough questions to pay less than first cost, so if you just look at it on purely first cost, what we've got to write a check for this year, I would say it's going to be less, but I think the city, harm might not be the right word, but I think the city would be better off if you get a firm that we're going, what's going to give you the best maintenance.
Mr. Mayor, special. I would like to back up those comments that six months ago, a year ago, whenever it was, when we brought on Draxler to do a research study and bring his expertise to the city on what we should do. And he went out in the field and took photographs of what we refer to as maintenance. And I'd be more than happy to pass these around for those that had not seen it. And here are some items that were new at the time, a few years old, that I've already gone and dis-repaired. We've got electrical wires hanging, somebody could be electrocuted. I just collected a small group of photos. And we're experiencing issues where we get consent orders. We have an issue where we're supposed to have a grate down at the silver treatment plant next to the auger that captures the plastic bags and everything else in the bulk. And because it would fill up and get stopped up, there's a hole cut in it so that the stuff could just flow on through, that's detrimental to what we're trying to accomplish. And I have a major problem. And might be a little bitter, I don't know how they came out, but I tell you, if that's the case, then I can't support a little bid. And if anybody wants to take time to look through this book, you'd be shocked at the lack of maintenance to maintain the level that we should have. And you just brought some big numbers there. And it's a matter of painting, chipping paint. You know, we've got ships in the Navy that are over fifty years old, and the reason they're still out there protecting the country is because they have a policy of chipping and painting to keep them up and keep them floating. And that's all that's required here, the chip and the paint, and we can maintain some good quality stuff. Got a couple of questions. My original question on the RFP, what was the procedure, Bob, that we were supposed to follow in bidding this? And with respect to notifying the bidders of where they stand?
Well, we didn't notify anybody where they stood. I mean, we, like I said, trust editor, we did do a technical rating of the three firms, the four of us, and it came out very close. We all had different ideas, it was close. And then we did the, we did the interviews. I guess we adjusted some of the ratings that the interviews. Then we opened the bids and looked at the bids. And we said we would look at the bids and develop a number based on the interviews and the technical ratings and the bids. But unfortunately, it turns out the bids, you don't have apples and apples, and it's really, I think, unreasonable to take a low bid with somebody when they've got a lot less staff down in one case, or a lot less equipment in the other case. So, that's the reason I'm saying, I believe you ought to take the one that, if we can get a consensus on who that is to do best out of the negotiating with, that's my recommendation.
But I guess my original question's still, maybe I hadn't stated it clearly. When the RFP was sent out to the prospective bidders, were they told that there would be this negotiation back in, you know, after they bid? Or was, were they told that they would, it would be?
We did say there would be negotiations with the people that, that's all.
Okay. Have we entered into any negotiation with any of them yet?
No, we have not entered into that. That is your, your ult decision as to who we negotiate with.
Had you discussed with any of the, anything specific with any of the three bidders?
Several of them have, I've gotten calls from all of them about this or that or the other. Some of them said, "Well, should we, should we give you a letter about clarifying this or clarifying that?" And they, I think, one of them submitted a new equipment list, another one sent a clarification in on the, on the project manager. But as far as specifics on their pricing or anything like that and where they stand.
So, you're where, it's fair to say then that your, the city's not negotiating yet with any of the three?
Oh, absolutely not.
Have any of the three had representatives come to city hall to meet with people?
I'm not aware of that. Not, not, not with me, but eventually.
Well, other than the interviews, you mean?
Yes, sir, yes. Has anybody, I'd like to know, does anybody else know the answer to that question?
I haven't, I haven't, I don't know if anybody else has.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Being the individual who likes to check references, and the only equation I'll give to you is I just took three bids and put in some ardent with floors in my house and asked my own references. I did have the opportunity. The only reference I have on one of the bidders is we using, and I've seen the pictures. The other supplier or vendor that's offering to provide the services, I had the opportunity to talk to two individuals from the city of Perry. And they have managed the utility or the facilities in the city of Perry for seven One did not have a card, so I don't remember his name, and the other I don't remember his name because I gave his card to Mr. Wood. Both of those individuals said to me about ESG, "It was the best decision we ever made." Mr. Wood, if I understand correctly, has called the city manager in Perry to check the references, and he can speak from that conversation. But I never, in having references, had such a positive, it was so positive, it wasn't, it wasn't, "They do a good job," or just something that was a matter of fact, but it was the best decision we ever made to go with them. So, I speak for that.
Mr. Mayor, one more question? Yes, sir. I, it really bothers me when I hear about negotiations after bids. I just, I just, I'm uncomfortable with that. I'm trying to get a little more comfortable with that because I have seen the price spreads, the cost spreads over five years. And it amounts to close to two million dollars difference between the high and the low over a five-year period of time. It's just short of two million dollars. Now, the other thing I want to clearly understand, Bob, when you started out, I made a few notes here, you said that y'all went through a technical ranking process and that the three bidders were quite close. So, the technical ranking process, I guess that's something you came up with and then the real?
We had, we had.
As far as the criteria?
We had a score sheet, all the committee members made their own ranking.
So?
And we didn't, we didn't really reach a consensus on that. But when you took all the scores and added them, they were pretty, they were pretty close.
And that verifies, I mean, I must admit, today I've spoken with everyone on the committee. And I talked with you a couple of days ago, and I spoke with the other three today on the phone, and that's exactly what they said, is that when you combine the results of the technical ranking, it was just almost a dead heat with the one that happened to be the low bidder also being slightly favored. Is that right?
Well, the numbers were so, I mean, they were, if you, whatever the numbers were, it might have been one percent, I mean, they were essentially a damn.
Okay. So, we've got, got the technical ranking has been done and completed. The bids have been opened, there's a big difference in the prices. I mean, the bottom line is the company's going to be responsible for maintaining our equipment. Do we really care if they have twenty employees or twenty-one employees? Does it really matter to us if it's new equipment or equipment that's already here on the job and paid for as long as they get the job done? Now, some of y'all, John particularly, has brought up some very valid concerns about the performance of our existing one. I would like to, them to answer that. You know, I'd like them to answer to these issues about lack of maintenance and fines and that kind of thing. But it looks like to me you guys have gone through the process that you laid out, you've gone through the process, four experts have come up with their opinion, it was a dead heat. And then the three bidders came out two, almost two million dollars apart. Why are we even having this discussion?
Mr. Mayor? Thank you. First question I have is, why do we have a panel? We had hired a consultant to give his input, and this is his lifeblood, what he does, and we accepted that, and then we have this panel. Where'd the panel come from? Because I was not aware of a panel. Who came up with the idea of panel? Oh? Nobody made it. What happened? Did you, boy, came? Yeah, I don't know who came up with the idea, but yes, I have three staff people who have some experience. David Potabian, you're a professional engineer? You got wastewater and sewer experience? To what degree?
Thirty years.
Okay.
Thirty years designing and construction.
Joby West, you're a professional engineer?
Yes, sir.
You got collection and distribution experience?
Yes, sir.
And Ken Patton?
Ken Patton doesn't, I don't think, has direct work in sewer experience, but he's got a heck of a lot of contract oversight and that's all.
Okay.
Yeah, that's all.
Stay with me.
I did want to use our staff, yes.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, one more.
Excuse me. He slowed down too much, you're getting there, go ahead with him.
Well, I want to make sure that Mr. Wood finished explaining how the panel came about.
Okay.
I need to ask Mr. Potabian a question. We were out at the treatment plant years ago with O'Brien or Keith or whatever name that group was, had a whole bunch of people out there with us. That was the first time I experienced looking down where that auger is and where that grate is and looking at that hole. You know what I'm talking about?
You're talking about the screen?
This one, right here.
Okay, that's bypassed it.
Right. Is that hole still there?
I don't know.
I don't know if it's bad or anything, but it is. It's bad. Now, we have problems with filters because the bypass screen isn't bypassing, it's letting stuff flow through. It was the inconvenience from what I understood, because that thing clogs up when we have a lot of water, that somebody has to go out there and clean it up. Now, that's hearsay, but to me, it makes sense. Now, because that was cut in there, the filter system went down. That's not maintenance. I look at these other pictures in here, and they might be the cheaper. And obviously, they are. I've got wires hanging here, that's questionable. I've got bolts, nuts, washers just chattered around. My good councilman right here was a builder, and I would hope that when you were building a home or something, at the end of the day, you would have your crew pick up scraps and clean up the place versus leaving everything hanging loose. We've got a lift station out in River Green, things on, they're ten years old, can't be too much of it, and it's already in disrepair. We've got a slab here, you can see where the concrete is, and it's got about a foot and a half of muck. How come that's never been cleaned? It backs up. Magnets, 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 magnets. We've got a pump here that's got bolt heads on it, every one of them is rusted, it's got a beautiful blue paint job. How can we get into a little chip?
How come we didn't do a little chip and painting, little scrubbing, put some blue paint back on it? Let it fall apart, let it come apart. We're talking about, he said something about $100 million. I realize you said something about?
Almost $2 million.
Two years, two years. $2 million compared to $100 million, to me is a big deal.
That's not a good apples, apples comparison, but you're talking something.
He addresses me.
I'm sorry, I shouldn't, I'm looking at you.
Then the hell, why are you addressing me then?
I am looking everywhere and I'm saying, "Thank you for allowing me to have the floor for the time of day."
You're welcome. I'll send you three names.
I said, "Thank you for allowing me to..."
Mr. Merritt? One thing that I will say is, ESG said to us in the interview process, and this is the thing that struck me, because I can't, I can't even address the technical questions or anything along that line. When a contractor or vendor comes to me and says, "If at any time during that contract, you don't like what we're doing for you, you just tell us and we'll go away." Now, none of the other, neither of the other two vendors gave us that option. They will, in the contract, say, "If we don't like what they're delivering, they'll go away." That speaks a lot for me, for any company that's going to spend upwards or close to a million dollars in capital to come in here and tell us that 30 days later, "You don't like us, we'll go away." That means a lot to me.
Bashford? I asked you a question about that grate, and I'd like to say it was, what, you guessed, maybe a year ago, a year and a half ago, what, a year ago? This stays a year.
Yeah, about a year ago.
Okay. It was an issue, correct?
I guess so, yeah.
Pardon?
I guess so, yeah.
No, I want your professional opinion.
Yeah, you, you shouldn't have a hole in it.
Shouldn't have a hole in it. Have you been out to the plant?
Um, not recently.
When was the last time you were out there? Did you look at it and see if it was fixed?
No.
That's costing us money.
Bob, it's, has anybody given a current operator, UP, the opportunity to answer some of these charges against maintenance? I, I mean, I've been told that, Bob, I think you told me that, we really had a design problem with that water treatment plant. It was really a poor design. I remember something about, we discovered a pipe that went to nowhere and that kind of thing, so. I mean, I would, I would like to hear if, if anybody is here to answer the questions as to why, why is all this mess like it is?
Mr. Merritt, we need to go ahead and? I'll answer that question, but in a very general way. I sat in the interview process, as any council member could have done, and the response from UP is, "We've been complacent, but we won't be anymore." Now, I don't know if that answers the specifics of each individual maintenance item that he has a photo of, but they openly admitted to, they called it complacency. Call it what you want, it's a lack of maintenance, and their exact words are, "Read our clothes," is, "We've been complacent, but we're going to now take the steps so we won't be anymore." Any other?
Would somebody from UP be able to answer these, these?
It'd be up for the council, I mean, they, they're? I don't think unless all vendors have a chance to speak that we should do it. That might be, that might be a problem unless all vendors were able to speak.
Are all of you here? Or any of them here? Can I see some UP?
Yeah, they is here.
Is, is everybody here from ESG?
Excuse me.
I have seen somebody from the other two firms, but?
Mr. Merritt?
Yes.
Mr. Bashford? If you call this charges, to me, it's a pictorial, it's actually a life, this is, this is real. So I don't know, and I, I wasn't aware of you saying complacency, "We're going to improve." But to me, this has been burning me for over a year, and I kept thinking, something's going to happen, something's going to change, and it never did. Mr. Brock?
I mean, I've, I was, I actually worked for a company in the early eighties that we built wastewater treatment plants, and I've been in several of them, and I got to say, that's not unusual for, for a lot of them. Some of them, the city of Woodstock's, last time I was in there was magnificent, you know, compared to ours. But, but that's not that unusual to see that, but I would, would like some of those questions answered, and, you know, if they've admitted they've been complacent, well, that could be good and it could be bad. You know, it sounds bad, but, you know, for the gigantic amount of money difference we're talking about still, plus the fact that the technical evaluation was dead even. I mean, we had three professional engineers and a, and a professional, uh, contract man evaluated, and it was dead even. Then you got an almost $2 million price spread, I'm going to have a, you know, you can build a lot of improvement for that.
Thank you. Any last?
I have a few minutes, sir. I have a little bit of a level, I guess.
Okay.
In reference to, to Bob's analysis on the points and the cost and everything, that really didn't come into effect, or shouldn't have come into play, in evaluating the costs. These firms were asked specifically to provide what they think they need to do the job. If firm one needed 19 people, so be it, if firm two needed 20 people, so be it, that was their choice. As a matter of fact, I think one firm was, I asked them flat out, "Do you have enough people?" They said, "Yes." The RFPs clearly states on how the firm is selected. We go through this RFP, go through the technical evaluation, uh, prior, prior to the bid opening, price openings. We did our ranking, and like everyone said, it was, it was pretty even.
At the first meeting, the first meeting, who were the, who was the lowest ranked firm by every member of that committee?
The initial ranking based on the written proposal, I think it was UP.
The lowest ranked, okay, go ahead, next, next item.
After the views, they were ranked number one.
Are they true?
No, yeah, they were ranked number one. Uh, after the technical review and, and interviews, they were ranked number one.
By all four?
We, we followed the, the rules in the RFP that stated, if you did not come to a complete consensus, all the scores were added up and averaged, and that would be the ranking. And they came up the highest ranked team, okay? Then, the prices are open, okay? And then it, it clearly states here, it says, "Contract negotiations will be initiated with the most highly ranked firm based on technical proposal, price proposal, interview, and supplemental information developed and provided by the city." So, you've got the highest ranked technical firm with the lowest cost. That, that is, that is?
Wait a minute, Mr. Merritt's answering, they're not? You're confusing a three-step, I think a three-step process, because after the interview, my understanding was that there were three different number ones. And that Mr. Troxler had one company as number one, Mr. Tavion and Mr., uh, Mr. Tavion had one of those companies as number one. I'm talking after the interview process. And, and Mr. West was on the fence, he didn't, he added that as a tie, and then Mr. Patton had an entirely different one than the two we're discussing now, isn't that correct?
Yes.
So I, I don't get where we get that all of us agreed on the same number one. If we've got, after this process, we got four different people selecting, basically, one vote for every one of them, with one person out of the four on that panel ruling a tie. I mean, I heard it, and that is correct, isn't it?
In, in the RFP that, that Mr. Troxler wrote, clearly states, "The committee will need to discuss the proposals and evaluate scores. Consensus will be reached with the committee agreeing with the scores representative of the city's overall evaluations. If consensus cannot be reached, the scores will be averaged and these scores will represent the committee's overall evaluation to that point." And that's what we do. I mean, the point, the point spread was one, thank you.
And who was the top? Thank you, sir. I got to ask you, as a professional engineer, if you'd step over to my book again, tell me that you accept that as maintenance. It's hanging, so it's got to be correct.
Well, that, Lamb, this looks like a cord.
No, this, this, this is maintenance, this is maintenance. That's maintenance. A rusted piece of whatever with a bunch of wires hanging on it. You could sign off on that as an engineer and say, "That is acceptable." Is that correct? You're, you are a professional engineer representing this city. Are you saying that's acceptable?
I've seen worse.
Well, thank you. I'll show you worse, right here's worse.
Let's go ahead and, they, the bottom line is, we're going to end this discussion now, but the bottom line is, this council will make the final decision. I mean, they have their own process, that's fine, the council's decision, if we want to go by that, whatever, the recommendation points or whatever, that's fine. But the council will make this decision. I mean, I don't know that, that the council could convey their authority to the staff and say, "Okay, staff, you make the decision." It has to be ours, and if it, if it is, and that's a decision we'll make at the next meeting, whatever it is.
Mr. Brock?
Just make a statement, I think it's important, our honorable way of doing business as a city, that we follow the RFP. These people, whoever the three companies are, spent a lot of time and effort to present these bids. We gave them a written RFP that Dave has read verbatim to follow. That's an agreement that we make with these people. I don't think we're following that. It's clear, we're not following that, so let's play by the rules.
Level? I'd like to, Mr. Merritt?
Mr. Bashford?
I would like to have our council make a call on, is that a legit bid or RFP or RQX or whatever?
Can you, can you make that decision and send it to us?
Is that acceptable to be able to do that?
Way past Bill's bedtime.
I know, I'm sorry.
I'm not sure exactly what the question is.
The question is whether or not this council will make the decision, I guess, finally, regardless or irrespective of, of what the staff recommends.
Sure.
I mean, it's a, this is not a low bid process, because it's services. You're treated, you're going to fourth company if you want to.
But my point is, we, we?
You're talking moral versus legal?
Well, yes, what we, and moral is important, because we got to do business with these people, moral is important, you know? Legal's not everything. Now, we've told these people the process we're going to follow, and he read that the technical recommendation and the low bid company would then enter into negotiations with the city. We've got that, it just happened, the technical recommendation and the low bid is the same company. Why are we not negotiating with them? We already made a deal with them, why not just continue on with the deal we've made?
Now, anything else, anyone else?
One question, does the RFP refer to a panel, or how does, does it refer to a panel?
It refers to a committee.
Okay.
Says, "The evaluations of the RFP and the respondents presenting then will be carried out by an evaluation committee created for this purpose. Committee will make its decision based on information gathered during the procurement process and evaluation criteria outlined in this section."
So who's the evaluation?
Well, okay, I, I think we've hashed this out enough. The council's going to make the decision next, I guess, in two weeks anyway, and Harry, you want to go, that's, that's fine, but we just need to move on. I don't think, I don't think there'll be another question out there, surely, about this. You save them for next time, okay? All right, let's, let's move on to the next item here. Uh, discussion of the recommendation, that's the discussion of the recommendations of Stormwater Advisory Board with respect to the, to the stormwater fee. There was an article, I believe, in, in the ledger there regarding this matter, and I, I would note one thing. One of the statements in there was based on apparently some minutes that had not been revised but have since then. Uh, and what it said is, "The six-member committee voted unanimously June 6th to make the 25% reduction recommendation to the city manager. As they are an advisory board and cannot make recommendations to the city council." They're an advisory board, but they can make recommendations to the city council since their appointment at the city council. So I think that I'll be able to do that, so. Anyway, that was a, a misquote, not necessarily a misquote, but a misunderstanding, I think, perhaps, maybe by some staff. But we have, I think we've, we've got some big folks here from the Stormwater Advisory Board. We have Jane Chellman, Skip Spears, Bill Kent, and Jack Goodwin, who else we got there? Jack, I'm, Jack Goodwin, I'm sorry. I mean, I say, I, I was looking at Jack Panter and said, "Jack Goodwin." Jack Panter, uh, so there's four members there. If you want to come forward and, and, you know, discuss the situation, your, your recommendation, the discussion that occurred at the Stormwater meeting, then?
I'm Skip Spears and this is Bill Kent.
And that's Kent, that's a former council member here.
Years ago.
Years ago.
Ten, eleven.
Before we get started on what we're going to talk about, our first little project we're going to think about would change the name of the bill for Stormwater Rain Tax. Actually, I thought at least people could take a touch of that, especially some of the bigger ones, but Bobby shot us down on that, so.
You can, there are consequences that you don't want.
But anyway, that was our first, first project. I, I guess the first thing I'd like to say, I was really astonished when we saw how much money this Stormwater Rain Tax generates. This year is projected to generate over $1,100,000 plus amounts, that's a lot of money.
Uh, we, we've been looking at the new proposed budget for 2013, and, and we've got some questions, and we're basically looking after the taxpayers, or trying to look after the taxpayers so we can. And I pay my part of this too, you know, for the, we, and looking at the larger amount of money, we were determined, we wanted to find out what other people do. So they furnished us some information from the ARC of other cities and counties and such. Well, that didn't help us. Some do, some don't. Some are more, some are less, there was no rhyme or reason, really, it's how it's done. Some had caps on it, some didn't, and actually Cherokee County, I don't think even does the line, has a certain line, particular line item separately, like city. Well, in looking at the budget, like I said, we're trying to get the best bang for the buck for the taxpayers, and we have some questions. So here's, here's that part, I guess. Lots of things that we see, in our opinion, some of us on the board, is called Stormwater, but really has nothing to do with stormwater quality. And we believe quality is the big word, I think that's what the state wants. I guess you have to have both, but lots of curb and gutters called Stormwater. Perfect example out here, I'm going down the sandy hill. Waters always run down the hill, it still runs down the hill, we put a new curb and gutter, new concrete sidewalk, grattle sidewalk, and it still runs. We put a new curving gutter, new concrete sidewalk, grattle sidewalk, and it still runs to the river and it's not cleaned up. Nothing changed on that. May go faster now, but that's about it. Uh, one of the other things, we, with some of the mandate things, some big ticket items to be done, some questions of whether they're mandated, need to be done, is it the law? We don't, are we all gonna go to jail? I think some of these things we've gotta work out, because there's a lot of money being spent on some of these items. If they're all necessary, it's great, but so far, we still got some questions on that. It's good to do, some answers have been said, but, but is it absolutely necessary? Because chances are, it's gonna change in a year, so, so, I mean, we need to spend the money, do we have to? And here again, are we gonna get in trouble if we don't? So, these are things that we're asking and trying to find out. Another thing that we've seen are salaries. When we got the 2013 budget, it didn't match what salaries were on another page. We had a list of people, their salaries, then we asked change on the actual percentage of how people time, how they work, how they get paid, like a hundred percent, twenty percent, or whatever. And we haven't received a dollar figure back on that to compare it against the other two that we're looking at. So, it's just a, we can't, it's kind of a moving target, and that's something we, we want to get a lot better grip on. So, seeing, saying all of that, at our last meeting, a motion was made and unanimously passed, that we would like to recommend to the council that a possible 25% reduction that we see in looking at what's coming in versus what's being spent and what we think should be spent, at least a 25% decrease in the rain tax fees to the taxpayers of the city of Canton. And that was unanimously approved, and so, we did that. But what we would like to do was to meet with the city and council in the next budget work session, to show you what we have found that made us come up with a figure of the seat on the budget versus the income. So, that's our request to meet with you all, and we'll work on it if you, if you will allow us. Bill?
I haven't, I haven't covered most of it, at least yet. I just, it looks like we have overtaxed, probably under two of Canton, because there is an easy two hundred fifty to three hundred thousand dollar, big excess money. I guess I'm stepping on toes here, but it looks to me like we've spent some of this border quality money, applied streets gates a little bit, and I don't see what that's got anything to do with border quality. And there's other things that we'd like to talk to you about, too, that we see, and we could be wrong, which is what I talk about in Secret Zone. But I believe we held, overtaxed the people in Canton and Stormwater, assuming like a great time, excess quarter million dollars to repay a fee.
Any questions?
What, what I understand, basically, you're saying is that the, and what I understand is that the Stormwater budget as originally proposed, I don't think anything but finalized by the council, who's working on budgets now. But basically, what I understand you're saying is, even that which is proposed out there, including all these projects, is still about a quarter million dollars short of the, of the revenue. In other words, that, there's a quarter million dollars more revenue than there is, than our expenditures.
And some questions on some of the other...
And, right. But what that's saying is, is that if you're talking about, you know, out of a million, you're talking about roughly a fourth there, so if you rolled the Stormwater fee back by 25%, because you, I, there's no need to collect a whole lot more than you're actually short of you need, you see, it looks like to me. But anyway, I, I understand. Now, we will be, we will be setting up here momentarily, here, a few minutes, a, a work session schedule, and I would assume that, you know, it will be an open meeting, you'd be happy to have you come, and when we got to that particular Stormwater budget, as we go through the, through the budgets, we'll welcome your input at that point.
We, we all know the smoke.
Yeah, in fact, we're, we're gonna kinda look, actually, we could probably do that since it's in discussion right now, unless you have an objection. We're looking at next Thursday, maybe, I'm not sure what.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I, I think we'll start as, as reasonably early as possible, if that, if that suits, that suits the mayor and the city council.
Does anybody have any preference that you can, you know, in three o'clock? Is that three o'clock we plan? Is that too early for everybody, or?
I'm assuming we breathe out.
Yeah.
And you want, if you want two mayor, we can be prepared, have them at the front end, so...
And just go to that section first.
Well, that'd be good.
About, about, uh, a week from today, three o'clock. Here, this room.
We'll probably have more than one work session if they wanna do theirs.
I mean, we could have some at all.
Somebody can be there?
Can Jack come?
Mr. Bass?
No, I'm not asleep. Right now, I can't see any color there.
We will have somebody there.
Okay. Mr. Bass will have a second question.
In the spirit of them coming to this budget, I would like to make sure that they're on the first on the docket, to be able to talk about that before we get into...
That's what we just talked about, Mr. Wilson Jeffries.
I didn't hear you guys talking amongst yourselves, I'm sorry.
Maybe we can get some of the answers we need before then, too, to...
Okay. Well, next Thursday, three o'clock, we're just trying to have y'all back first, to set through all this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We have a, a, a consideration request from Cherokee County School Board to return Academy Street to a two-way street. Did they bring this up to you, or?
Yeah, I think it initially, it initially came to Mr. West, and, and, and you don't necessarily have to come up, Jovi, there was a, a request preliminarily made by the school board. There was an attempt to get some information from the school board and some of our public safety officials, in anticipation of this meeting denied. I think Mr. West was not able to secure all that information, and with the concurrence of the school board's ask that we defer this item until the August meetings.
That is correct.
Okay. All righty. City managers report, you have anything else?
No, sir, you're pretty much covered. Not, I, I will say that, uh, that Jovi is making progress on our canoe launch on the river, not to be confused with the other launch site, but canoe launch on the river. And has got some written approval, as of today at least, from the Corps of Engineers, so that's progressive.
That's a boat launch.
Boat launch.
Not just a...
Mayor bring his lower grab to be more...
That's right.
All right. Is the one at the, with Bresmore, is that just canoe, or is that boat?
That's, that's fishing boats.
Oh, that'd be fishing boats, too. Okay, well, all right. Anything else, something for the council? Okay. Entertained, motion to adjourn.
So...
Say. Say hi.